Okay. This is all going on.
Okay.
Three.
Yep.
Good to hear.
Not, not that I'm desperate to be heard on recording, but I can just imagine the comments already, so thanks outside.
We're gonna through mine.
Yeah, interpretive notes.
That's the lit read of me, right?
So, um, so Plan sixteen County Matters, um, as the Mayor has just said, it's for the Shawstart Centre, Kingsway in Setford, and the application is from Norfolk County Council, and it is to replace existing window units for white powder coated aluminium double glazed door unit. So the works are to remove the existing white UPPC window unit and replace it with a white coated aluminium door unit. So there's been no objections from Breckland, um, and there was no additional comments to that. I can show you the location maps.
Most people are familiar.
I've seen them. I know they've been, Alan has been sending them out about.
Are we happy to support?
Just a general comment on both this one and the next one, actually. Um, it's really pleased the County Council investing in these two buildings in Setford, I think it's good news. Um, you know, there was a time when we didn't know we would have the Shawstart Centre on Kingsway, and it's there, and they're investing in it, and I think that's good news. Um, and certainly in relation to the second one, the library there, um, they've been doing some groundwork work as well. There was a big issue with weeds in the sort of, um, sort of cottage, um, and they've tidied it up, so I think it's good news, right?
Okay, so back on to A then, are we happy to support? Yep, everybody, that's one dealt with then. On to B then, which is the library. It says proposed replacement of flashing to the roof and cladding to the facade of the library building. On the plans, it does say missing lead flashing. I'm not sure whether that's just the, the.
Uh, no, no, the proposals are to replace sections of missing lead sheet cladding for new sheet cladding. Um, I think we find that, um, somebody stole it. So the original, um, external lead finish facade of the Setford Library has been stolen. The works are being completed on behalf of Norfolk County Council Risk and Insurance Department. Their current policy is where lead has been stolen from a property, they will look to seek alternative materials to replace it with. The, um, Historic Environment Officer has no objections to that, and Breckland District Council have no objections to that either.
Are we happy to support?
So I can.
Yep, yes, one dealt with, thank you. Want to see then?
Look, I can even show you where it was stolen from, can't I? Didn't give me a chance to show you that one.
Highlighted on the plan.
You see how much you got for it?
Yeah, I could, I'll tell you later.
I don't think I know. So we can get Google Maps up for street view.
You may as well, people can.
Yeah.
Do if they really want to, then that's supporter, yes.
We're on to fifty-three Highlands now, um, two storey side and rear extensions, including a new one bay carport and garage.
Okay, so this is the site map for that. You have the, uh, I'm sorry, these are all so small. Did you have a glance to look up on here? Uh, the existing post, there we go, that's probably not very helpful. I don't think you can see. He would have won those pointy sticks, couldn't I? So, uh, there has been no additional comments on this. So you can see it's on the left hand side of the top.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm very short as well, so I can't reach that. So, uh, if you look at the top, it's the, to the left of the building, and to the south you can see it's the, where the, um, libraries are. Internals, there's been no comment on the internals.
I don't think there's anything really to note on that. It's really within the exact, the footprint of that, there's no overlooking matters. Um, front facade pretty much as was, so we have support.
I just, I'm fairly certain it's light, light materials as well. Maybe anything that, um, that might have been of interest is they're gonna put lights on the back, but I'm assuming they're only gonna be security lights that you'd have on the back of your house as opposed to floodlights for the, you know. But it is all, it is all.
Roof lights.
At the back.
Yeah, they're just windows, really, with roof lights.
Yeah, so it's all matching, matching materials.
Right, rattling through them.
So happy with that as well?
So now on to D, new build frames up at Brunel Way. Replace the link by extending the lean to, link to the new storage building, which has increased in size and increased in scale. So we did have this up for us before, and they did some work on the, the lean to, um, there, which could see investment going in. Um, but it's just.
Yeah, it has been previously, um, it's been previously approved. It is literally a, um, minor increase to the width, but I couldn't find anywhere on what that was.
Well, given that it's an industrial area, um, and they're looking to manage it, sorry, I wouldn't have thought we'd got any too much concerns on it. Happy to support, or is there any, any wants to raise matters?
So that's the, um, site addition. It doesn't, I couldn't see a definitive on there what the actual addition was. They just give the length of it. But from the site map, it doesn't look.
Could have the, the lean to up before us before, but it's just the link.
Yeah. So, oh, wait a minute, it, it does have a. The new building, so what it was, oh, well, it doesn't help, I said. They said it's, um.
So the requested variation.
Yeah, six hundred. The covered link has been replaced by an extending link to, to the new storage building, but the actual whole building has been increased by six hundred square foot. That's not what the additional bit is. The new building is now eighteen metres long by nine metres wide, our previous nine, uh, twelve by nine, so it's six metres longer. Or six foot longer, six metres longer, yeah.
I wouldn't have thought, too worried about the appearance of that because industrial area and. So happy to support, yep. The E then, um, areas conditions two and three materials plots forty forty-two of subphase one B of Kingsfleet Landall eight ten seventy-five. Do you have any information regarding these materials? It wasn't quite evident on there.
So I have put.
Yeah.
Uh, one of their, because these again are ridiculously small, that even on the, what you get printed on, you can't actually read that. However, that is a brochure for one of the new type houses that they're talking about, yeah.
For a passage now?
Oh, yeah, it did, it did get sent out, I believe.
Because I think it's only four units that affects.
Yes.
And I couldn't actually see what material changes were.
Let me just get this on, sorry, so in all this paperwork away, I end up with mountains of it. So, um, reserve matters relates to subphase one B of the consent and see expansion of two hundred and twenty-five dwellings, public open space and associated infrastructure and details relating to the layout, scale, appearance and landscaping. So that is wherever that is, that is what that is subsection phase one. But there's no detail in that, literally that's what they sent with the application form. Have you got anything else on yours, Jerry?
No, I, I was just having a look. It's like, Stuart, I looked at this one in advance and I couldn't quite see what the change was, so I don't feel quite able to comment. Um, and in the application form, interestingly, it says, um, see covering letter, but in nowhere in some information is there a covering letter. So I don't think we can make the comment on it because I've no idea what the change is on.
So do we want to then say no comment due to lack of information?
Not getting for you to.
Can I go back to the actual, let me just have a look at the wording of the. Variations of two, yeah, because we've got the new layout, like you say, there's a new type of house, isn't there, which is what that is.
Okay.
Um, there's not enough information. Could we postpone this until they give us some more information about what they're asking for?
But, but we probably will miss the deadline, but.
That's their fault for not giving us enough information.
So we, we are a consultancy only, so we probably won't get the opportunity to make it. But I think all we can do at this stage is say that unable to offer an opinion due to lack of information.
Yeah. Sorry. Can we not mention something to them or have it? Because this is the second time, I think, they've now come to planning related things with terrible information provided. Like the first one was they wanted to, um, change the order in which they built some of the development of this one. And that was absolutely no explanation why they wanted to do that. Now they wanna change what they, I assume, the materials they're building out with. There's no information provided again.
I suspect they're having conversations with Breckland planners about what they'd wanna do and they're.
It's just not.
Giving a little nod to say, we'll put this in and it'll get through, but obviously it doesn't give us any information to draw any conclusions to.
So when we answer, there is, there, one of the options is comment. Because you basically get support to.
Yeah.
Comment. So if you wanted to not sort of like pick one way or the other and just merely wanted to comment on the lack of.
Well, we are disappointed with the lack of information.
It's, it's lack of information again.
Hmm, probably it's a lot of information in there.
Well, it's just not the one bit we need. It is lots.
Yeah, because, um.
Difficult to, for us to approve something when we don't know what we're going to approve.
Quite.
So I, you know, I couldn't approve anything, no.
I don't, I'm, we're proposing to approve, I thought we suggested, like, we're unable to comment because of lack of information. Or we object saying, you know, are unable to ascertain whether it's good or bad because we haven't got the information, so.
I'd rather like that object because they once again have not given us the information to enable us to make a decision one way or the other, to support or be against.
I think I'm inclined to probably agree with saying no, due to lack of, it's, it's not. No, they've done, done it before. They're not, they're not following.
Stuart Powell, then are we happy to object up and then add to it?
Object.
The objection.
Objection due to lack of information.
Due to lack of information, reference, in particular reference materials.
Would it be wise to say holding objection due to lack of information?
Holding objection due to lack of information.
Yep.
If we can, Chair, if we could ask for a copy of the covering letter.
Yes.
Then at least as individual councillors, we, you know, we can respond individually, uh, if that does come through.
In particular, councillor would like to see the cover of the letter.
If Jerry was pointing is quite important because, um, in the early days, I'm just grabbing on for benefit new councillors, but in the early days, we did push quite strongly for at least some of Kingsfleet, um, to have Flynn incorporated at least somewhere. So it's in keeping with Setford and doesn't look distinctly, um, uh, dissimilar to, to, to Setford. Um, and that was completely renowned. They just said it wasn't affordable, we know, really. A couple of bits of Flynn wouldn't have cost a fortune. Um, and I think the nervousness is if they're rowing back on the materials even further, you know, we don't want it to be a sort of inferior add-on to the town. We want the materials to be in keeping. I think that's the danger.
As you say, we could only do a holding objection because of no other grams really until you see it.
Okay.
Right, now on to F then, nine the covert, single story rear and side extension.
This is the location, so it's actually quite a large corner. That's probably the biggest actually on that side. Again, very small plans. So. Going the wrong way.
One. Open left.
Yeah, there we go, yeah. So it will be. Normal.
Laser. Unfortunately. Put the wrong, wrong ones these last one.
You're getting there. Teleport, was it, where you go, yeah. Where the curse was.
But it's one of those.
It's on the corner, it's on the fan there.
That one, yeah.
Yeah, so it's quite a wide, um, piece of land.
A lot of music in, I mean. I hope so, yeah. So could we just go back to those, is it before and after?
It's on there. It's true.
Just to keep cross happy.
Yeah, so if you look at the garage bit on the left, there's, it was flat and then.
I guess I'd be gonna look at the hand of an extended.
Yeah.
There's no comments from, um, any of the authorities or from neighbours on that.
Is it an improvement to me? I think single storey is okay.
Yep. Happy to support?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Now on to G, Eldo Properties Limited, change of use from school to office, uh, both restricted. I live at the barn and eleven Berry Road. So this is the Mara and Lotus Academy that I'm moving out because they're going in to, right in the street, um, so I think they're changing it back to what it was previously in terms of the office. Obviously, eleven Berry Road is a little different to. School.
Yeah.
Don't see any problems from our end of change of use. I think we all had concerns when it was changed to a school, um, in terms of the people movements and the traffic movements there. Um, if they're going back to office, then that seemed appropriate to where it was, I mean.
Because what the client is saying is that they're converting back to an office class E to prevent the premises being left empty. And there's no alteration required externally or internally for that to happen. And there's no comp, no objection from the Historic Building Officer about it. Because basically it's, it's remaining as it is, but there's just a change to usage.
All the rooms have been changed from classroom to office.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. We have it sport. Yep. Okay. Now on to H, and seen machinery and non-illuminated facial signs to the rear and front of the building.
Oh. This is, so it's the end of it. If you look behind, um, given, you can see that there's. In the middle, there's a lovely blue and white sign, that's signage, I don't know if it's easy to see on there. So on this, obviously there'd be signage at the front and the rear of the building. This is it mocked up.
Yep.
Obviously it's not already there. AI or Photoshop or whatever it is.
Took someone half a day, didn't it?
Hello, I was up there for ages. Um, so it has actually got over there because I'm, you need probably. And the writing is so small, I had to print it out. Very certain, remember aluminium. So, uh, it is blue aluminium composite for the background panel, but five millimetre cast acrylic for the lettering with a capital height of six hundred and thirty millimetres. Should you be interested?
Also, well, it does exactly what it needs to do.
Yeah.
What's there, so happy to support, ready?
Yeah.
Three. Yep.
We didn't.
Because you have an overwhelming.
Okay, then, four, three, six, twenty-three, late planning case received, doesn't.
There is three.
Ooh. If we didn't used to have that on the round, maybe we do.
I said to Terry earlier this morning, I think he was hiding the mother of festival when I was. So, let's have a look at the first one. So the first one again is change of use, and this is from, um, F one non-residential. The, uh, it's, used to be the back emotion physiotherapy clinic, and then changing it to, um, C three residential. So where it is on the map, down on, uh, L Street. And that's the, the whole area. And this is how it's being converted inside. I don't think there's actually been a great deal to.
No, the only thing I picked up on the plan said was just the blocking up the back door, um, was part of it, but it has been residential in the past, it was converted to.
Yeah, back again.
This type.
Yeah, because it's actually been sold to the new, uh.
Not changing the front at all.
No.
So happy to support, really.
Yep.
Only nine more slides to go, people. But, uh, the next one, so the next one is, um, Highlands, and that's reference one O six five. And that again is for a single story rear venture. So this is the site map. And, um, if you. So it's the one in red, I don't know if you can see that very clearly, but it's, it is this one, it's not particularly correct.
So the frontage is on to Highlands itself, but the garage projects forward to the existing bungalow. Next station is going on the back towards the railway line.
Yeah.
Um, let's see.
So, and this is what has been put forward again, single story back. It does, it does have a slightly pitched.
Yeah, that's one.
It's moving.
A sloop as opposed to pitched.
Doesn't look very big to me, it's all.
Hmm.
And I don't think I have a requirement. It is all matching materials as well.
Yeah. These are another sort of that. I think that's on there as well. Yeah, on the right hand side, there, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so I think that's a better idea there. The two bedrooms, the bedrooms have been extended on the left hand side. Back to what the previous one was.
And if you look at the bottom one, what is being made is no further back than the building next door.
So it is a pitched roof on the, um, the section back, so. Happy to support it. Yep.
Last one. Back to the rest of them. So the last one is, um, a slight increase to the width of an improved extension of thirty-two Rosecroft Way. So this has been previously, um, agreed. And what we're doing. Is, I think. I don't even, oh, I think it's on the, it is.
That's view of it.
No, it's all look, there you go, so. Post ground floor.
Sure is that one. Yeah, so it, it is, because this is the one, if you remember, we talked about, it, it goes into a long point on the side of the road. And they asked for the extension to the rear before, and we looked at it, and there was no overlooking windows at the back. Just conservatory there now, isn't it?
Yes.
It looks better than that now.
But the, are we saying, Tina, it's an amendment to the size of it, rather than any other changes?
They've literally just made it, if you look on this one, they've literally made it wider. But it's still not wider than the actual building.
So, but it hasn't gone further back into.
No, no, it's gone wider.
Width of the house. Yeah.
So, yeah.
Okay, be sure that's it before and after on there.
No, that's, they're both proposed, though.
So that's proposed ground floor and first floor. But I would say neither of them are wider than the width of the building, so it just literally increased it. But again, it doesn't say on.
Completely done all the front. Yeah, I don't think I can really show you any better on here, to be honest. But that's.
That's the history goes.
That's it there now.
Yeah.
It's just gonna end, probably gonna end right across the back of the house.
That's the main one, that.
Yeah, we're just behind it.
But I think, you know, it's not any wider than existing frontage, and we have the support.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. Okay.
That's the last of the.
So four, three, seven, twenty-three, decisions of variance.
Um, I believe these were circulated by Alan during the week. I did have a conversation with them because I think some of them on there we've looked at previously because he just downloaded all the variances as opposed to ones that we've, we have, um, previously discussed, um.
Nothing further to add, really?
No, no, better to know, really.
Four, three, eight, twenty-three, then, I refer to Greater Setford Partnership, the Greater Setford Partnership meeting was cancelled last week.
Because flagship cancelled on them a short notice.
Yes.
Empty flagship.
But don't know where you're button.
Is it an opportunity to address the information that we get for planning, do you think?
Yep.
Because it would be in a kind of more formal.
We're happy to put that on there as a, same way, I feel we're getting the correct information when variations are coming forward. Yep.
So I'm so sorry for what? I feel like, yeah, you should be, I do apologize. I was, I was just looking, I was.
These items for Greater Setford Partnership.
Okay.
So this gives us an opportunity to feed into that partnership meetings, anything we have concerns about. And it could be, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be pure planning. Like getting the bank council away, putting, you know, representatives on one of those. But also, you know, there are other areas, I think it's, it's, uh. You can, you're, Brad, 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 so, you know, we've got the ins on it, but it's good to have your input as well. So this gives you the opportunity if you want to raise matters.
I missed the beginning of it, I do understand, yes.
Sorry, because I'm mumbling. Yep, so we'll put that on there, but then.
Let's ask you under this one, um, where are we at with our request for review of the boundary situation? Is that going to be discussed at that meet? I can't remember how many meetings.
Um, did you go to the last meeting?
I was the beginning of it.
Okay, so Sam did make reference to it, and he informed us that, this just set the scene. We went through the pain of having the new, um, boundaries. We went through the pain of having the new boundaries put in to bring the new Kingsfleet in, but it was agreed that the Kilson side would be deferred until such time that phase come on. We made the point that now they're trying to accelerate the Kilson phasing, so we had that debate about bringing those in. I was told by Sam, and he had looked into it, that whilst the boundaries for district are up for review, we can't put our process request in until that's been determined. So once the Breckland boundary view has happened, then we can put our request in for the parish boundaries to be... So we're, hands are tied a little until that boundary is done, but it's on that radar. Yep. So 43923, community engagement, anything? 44023, committee officers update.
I don't have anything additional.
Okay, so I think that brings us to the end of the planning meeting. We've stopped recording. What we'd like to do is just do touch base with people about list trusses.